Meeting to order. We'll note that all commissioners are present, and the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
President Johnson, I would like to submit two changes to the order of business. The first would be the elimination of the 4B Citizen Interest Forum Planning and Zoning Commission. That is something that we'll add on the next city commission meeting. And I'd like to replace that with a check signing resolution that would authorize Attorney Goss to be included as a signatory.
Any other changes? If there are no other changes, would there be a motion to approve the order of business as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who say nay. So the motion carries. Move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll go to the non timetable agenda, and Item A there is a planning and zoning ordinance, and City Attorney Goss will introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of the ordinance which cleans up the description of the Planning and Zoning Commission membership. The only revision since the first reading is changing the Parks and Recreation position from highly recommended to that it shall be included. City staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. This time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding Ordinance 1593, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment? No one wishes to comment, so any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll move we approve second reading of 1593.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. By the way, so I don't forget, apparently, there has been some rework done on the lectern, so if any of you come up this evening and you get highly animated, don't pound on the lectern, okay? It could fall apart, so come up here and pound on the sledge.
President Johnson, who made the lectern for us?
I think it's a highly respected company that follows up on any warranty issues. Okay, so Item B is the new item added. This is a check signing authorization resolution, and I'm assuming it is Resolution 36-2015?
That is correct.
Okay. So is there anything you want to say about it, Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, I think the introduction, as I've mentioned before, it simply authorizes Attorney Goss to be a signatory on city accounts. It would add her to the list which includes Mayor Johnson and myself.
Okay. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item C is a liquor license ordinance regarding hours and days, and City Attorney Goss will introduce this item.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1594, which updates the city code to allow on sale liquor sales to begin at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. There are no revisions since the first reading, and city staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public. Any comments, questions by city commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Go to Item D, and this is a liquor license transfer, and City Attorney Goss will also introduce this item.
Thank you. We have a request for a liquor license transfer for The Rock. Adam Metzger is the owner. He's passed the background check and paid the appropriate fees. City staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goss. You've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Any comments or questions? Now, is there a motion regarding this issue?
Make a motion to approve the transfer.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to Item E, the financial report, and making his debut today, giving the financial report is Mr. Maury. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the commission. The reports I have today are for the period ending as of August 31st, 2015. I'd like to start with the general fund revenues. To start, our property taxes are just under 4.2 million. That's actually just 1,000 shy of our initial projected budget. We've also have collected about 8.3 million general fund revenues, which is 47 percent of our initial 17.8 million dollar revenue projection. Moving on to the expenses, this is just a very brief summary of our expenses. Right now, we've been pretty consistent, from general government through the cultural services. Each one of those is between 59 percent to 66 percent of our projected budget, and overall, we spent 62 percent of our 17.8 million dollar budget with 11.1 million. Moving on to the enterprise funds, it's also been fairly consistent from the beginning cash balances to the ending cash balances. Water, wastewater, and storm water have all been consistent. Water and wastewater started at 6.8 and finished to this point at 6.2 million. Storm water is also consistent, only going down about 20,000 to the ending cash balance. And solid waste actually increased almost 1.3 million to a 2.9 million ending cash For our water sales, this graph right here, this contains our water consumption, our meter charges, and our connection fees, all put together in the graph. As you can see, the trend's been fairly consistent, other than that drop in July. That drop was due to a significant decrease in connection fees, as well as a significant decrease in consumption in July. And then, as you can see, where our percentage collected for our total budgeted amount is 56 percent. For wastewater, it's also, this graph also contains consumption, meter charges, and connection fees. Very similar to water. It's been consistent with a fairly significant drop in July, but then making up for that drop when we get to August. Wastewater, with our 1.7 million, is 34 percent of the 5.2 million we had projected Solid waste, this graph consists of utility billing, commercial landfill, gate receipts, commercial services, and also commercial container rent. On a similar trend with water and wastewater, it started off increasing and slowly goes down once you get to July and August. A big reason for that is our gate receipts had a tremendous increase going into June with 111,000, and they dropped to 37,000 in July, and then down to 32,000 in August. So we're currently at 62 percent collected for solid waste. Our total utility sales, this graph represents the three graphs we just showed you, and it also adds in storm water. Storm water doesn't have a significant impact on the graph. Between February and August, it's been between 14,000 and 16,000 in each of those months. So it's been a pretty consistent graph. Moving on to the 1 percent sales tax, our year-to-date revenues for the 1 percent sales tax are 4.5 million. It's actually down 13.7 percent from 2014. Our projected expenses total 6.5 million, which are actually down 38 percent from 2014 to make up for that difference. Our overall projected cash balance is an increase of over 1.6 million, or 17.4 percent. The 50 percent portion of the 1 percent sales tax, which goes to our annual street projects, the revenues and expenses are both projected to be around 4 million, so the ending cash balance will have little change. The expenses are shown as of zero right now because we haven't made the transfer to the annual street projects from this fund. The 20 percent portion of the 1 percent sales tax, this portion goes toward job creation and other senior citizen programs. Based on projected revenues and expenditures, the ending cash balance is projected to be 2.8 million, which is a 23.6 percent increase from 2014. The 30 percent portion of our 1 percent sales tax, which goes towards capital improvements, including trails construction and the West River Community Center bond payment, or half of the West River Community Center bond payment. The ending cash balance for this portion of the 1 percent sales tax is at 1.1 million, which is a larger increase from 2014, but that's just based on transfers and what we had originally projected. The half percent sales tax, also, you're seeing the expenses are very low here because the transfers have not been made yet. We're hopefully going to make those soon, and then you'll see a more accurate portrait of what our expenses are actually looking like. There will be a $2 million transfer, which is going to go out to the Public Safety Center, and then a $1 million transfer out that'll go to the general fund. The hospitality tax, which contains the other half of the West River Community Center bond payment from the 30 percent of the 1 percent. This hospitality tax has also been very consistent, starting with a $500,000 beginning cash balance, and ending up with $800,000 ending cash balance, which is a 44.5 percent increase from 2014. Occupancy tax, which covers the museum operating expenses and subsidies, including the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The occupancy tax also had a minimal change from 2014 to 2015. You see a higher beginning cash balance, but the ending cash balance, there's not a lot of difference because revenues and expenses are very similar. And then finally, moving on to the street projects. Right now, you're seeing a very large deficit in the ending cash balance. That's because there's 5 million that was a payment to the DOT that we're making a transfer from oil impact funds to offset that. There'll also be some more money from oil impact funds to offset, to give us a healthier ending cash balance. So hopefully, we can give you a more accurate portrayal of that as well. If there's any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Are there other questions for him? Do you anticipate making those transfers in October, or?
We do. Hopefully, by next week, we can get those transfers going and have them completed.
Right, because we're, we show a large surplus in our oil impact funds, but then we have negative deficits in some of these other funds that are...
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so you're going to square that away.
Right, and hopefully, before we give the next financial report, we can have that taken care of for you.
And then, just to remind the public again, when you talk about sales tax receipts being down 13.5 percent, the North Dakota Treasurer's Office had a change where our payments are delayed a few days compared to last year, which meant since the city's more or less on a cash basis, we didn't receive any payment in January.
Correct.
So you're comparing seven months' worth of collections this year to eight months' worth of collections last year. But if the Treasurer's Office hadn't made a change, we would actually be down about 3 percent instead of 13.
Yes, Mr. President, that's correct.
Yeah, so, okay. Other comments or questions on the financial report?
Is the shortfall we're projecting in the water enterprise, we talked about that during the budgeting process, is that number holding about the same as what we talked about a few weeks ago?
I believe so. I'd have to look into that and get back to you, but as of right now, I believe so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the financial report?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. That brings us to the 2016 budget. This would be the second reading. It is Ordinance 1591. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment regarding the 2016 budget may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Are there any additional comments or questions by city commissioners? Or, Mr. Kessel, is there anything you would like to add in the way of introduction?
I just want to make sure that the commission understands that there's been no changes since the last public hearing, so it's the same document as you saw at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? I think city staff, city leaders are understanding that we're in a pretty fluid situation with the local oil economy, and I suspect as you get closer to 2016 and get early into 2016, if you need to make some adjustments, you will make those.
Commissioner Johnson, I think we've forecasted the budget, at least at some portion during the year, the last three years, and I don't see next year being a whole lot different.
Okay, is there any other comments? Is there a motion regarding the second reading of 1591?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item G is the 2016 Fee Schedule Resolution, and Mr. Maury, I think you're introducing that.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. What you're looking at here hasn't changed a lot since Deputy Administrator Vlesky had presented it at the last commission meeting. The vast majority of fees on our 2016 fee schedule are the same from 2015. Just to reiterate the point with this, the 33 cent increase you see on the water usage rate that was done in October will be the only time that's increased. You will not see that increase on January 1st of 2016. Also, with the sewer utility usage rate, you're seeing a 15 cent increase, and all our information here is based on an average household usage of 6,000 gallons a month. And with the increase to the usage rate of water and to wastewater, altogether, an average household will see an increase in their utility billing of $4.88. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. You've heard his introduction to the 2016 Fee Schedule Resolution. Any questions or comments? Not, is there, this is Resolution 37-2015. Is there a motion regarding it?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item H is the Water Reclamation Facility Manager Job Description. Mrs. Nomenek will introduce this.
Mr. President, I'm actually going to present...
Oh, okay. Well, I can't see the back of the room with this big lectern anymore, so I don't know who's back there and who isn't, so...
City staff is requesting approval of the job description for a water reclamation facility manager. The position supervises, plans, and directs operation of the water reclamation facility, laboratory test and wastewater treatment operations, sewer collection, and reuse water systems. The position also schedules, assigns, supervises, and evaluates work of operators. The Civil Service Commission and city staff recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. You've heard the introduction, the recommendation. Do you have any questions? This is an upgrade in job description for the mechanical wastewater treatment facility, and now that we've had close to a year, I think, of operating it, we're getting a sense of what it requires.
President Johnson, that's an excellent summary. We, upon the recommendation of the engineering firm, we implemented that staffing model. What we have found is that we believe an upgrade in this position will help us be more efficient in the building and maintain somebody longer term. We're excited and hopeful that you'll approve this position.
And right now, this is a position we're outsourcing to an engineering firm.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion regarding this job description?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item I, Utility Easement Amendment, and City Attorney Goss will introduce this item also.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September 8th of this year, the commission passed Resolution Number 33-2015 vacating a utility easement. There was a minor error in the legal description preventing that from being recorded. This resolution simply fixes those errors in the legal description. City staff recommends approval.
So does this get a new number then, Resolution 38, or does it go by the previous number?
Yes, it gets the number 38.
38-2015, okay. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Is there a motion then regarding this item?
I'll move we approve the easement amendment, 38-2015.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. That brings us to Item J. This is another introduction by City Attorney Goss. We'll let you take it from there.
Thank you. This is another correction for a resolution. On May 7th, the commission passed Resolution Number 17-2015, which was a resolution agreement providing for payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot for Housing Solutions LLC on behalf of Northern Place. It was brought to our attention that there was a typo in the legal description, and Housing Solutions was listed as the owner rather than Northern Place. This proposed resolution just fixes those errors.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the introduction. Any comments or questions? I think this is Resolution 39-2015.
That's correct.
Is there a motion regarding it?
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 39-2015. I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kessel, oh, this is City Attorney Goss on reports. You have four minutes to give us a report on mechanical and contractor's license, but you can, you obviously get more than four minutes, but we have four minutes till the timetable agenda, and then if four minutes isn't sufficient, we'll come back to this.
Understood.
We'll let you start.
City staff has been working on an ordinance to implement mechanical and contractors licenses. The ordinance would also include revisions to clean up the code, such as changing references to the city auditor, to the city administrator. We've also set the bond requirement at $5,000. Currently, some of them are at 1,000, some of them are at 5,000, and the average for the North Dakota cities is 5,000. We just wanted feedback from the commission before presenting this for first reading.
So we kind of have some of this now, and quite a lot of this we don't have, because I'm seeing lots of new language here.
Correct. So the additions would be the mechanical license, which is for HVAC installers, and then a contractor's license. What we currently have is a moving license, concrete for driveways and sidewalks, and then a plumbing license.
Okay, so why wouldn't you do electrical? You're doing heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Why not electrical contractors? And I hate to ask this question, but why not casework contractors? What, I mean, I don't quite follow what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I think the addition of the electrical contractors is a good one. The idea behind this type of amendment would be to give the public more assurance that whom they hire is licensed, and if they are licensed by the city, that also means they're bonded, and hopefully prevent, or at least minimize, issues that are happening in our community today, because we simply don't issue licenses to several of the contractors. But I think your inclusion of electrical licenses would be...
How about things like roofing?
I think if you look at...
Is that in there?
7.200.06, it does include electrician.
Mr. President, if I could answer...
Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
Are these people not licensed by the state?
Some of them certainly are licensed by the state. The contractor's license that the state issues are based upon value of work done.
So aren't we duplicating something if the state's already issuing a license?
We are, Commissioner Decker, yes, we are duplicating. We do that today. Several of the contractor's licenses that we issued today are duplicates of state-issued If the contractor, if we issue a local license, we then there have the authority to remove that license if they don't live up to the standards that we expect. If we allow the state to take that action, then we are relying upon them to take that, well, to take that action. And so we would have more local control over who can conduct business within our city limits by issuing a local license in addition to the state license.
I just see duplication here, and who's going to inspect these people?
Well, as city staff, we conduct inspections on work that's performed through building permits all the time. This would allow us, if we do get a call, which we do on occasion, of a poor contractor or poor work, we can then follow up and either verify that there was inadequate work and potentially have someone... was inadequate work, um, and potentially have someone, um, remove their license, um, if, if the work bears itself out.
Have we gotten any feedback from, say, home builders or any other contractor groups about this?
I can't answer that. Maybe Attorney Goss can.
Um, I've spoken to a couple of contractors who said that it's pretty standard in most other places to have to do it, so they weren't opposed to a, um, the city requiring a contractor's license. Um, I have not spoken to anyone regarding the mechanical license.
Okay, well, I can see this is gonna take more than four minutes. Um, so, since we do have, uh, three timetable, uh, agenda items, I think we'll suspend the discussion on, on this till we complete the timetables, and then we'll come back to the contractor license. So at 5 o'clock, we have a presentation by Domestic Violence and Rape Crisis Center, and I think representing them are Darianne Johnson and Rhonda DuKart. Welcome. And remember what I said about the podium there, don't pound on it, because apparently it's not quite dry or something.
President Johnson, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, um, thank you for a few minutes, uh, to, uh, visit with you this evening. We come to you for a request, with a request for your assistance. We have the opportunity to build a much-needed new shelter. The current shelter is extremely inadequate in size to accommodate the victims that require a safe place to stay. The shelter is currently occupied, is not adequate for the number of residents that we house. It currently houses 18 people in four bedrooms and two bathrooms. Oftentimes, these rooms are filled additionally with pack-and-plays, cribs for infants. Victims need their personal belongings and, uh, space to get ready for work, for school. The shelter residents are expected to share a very small, common kitchen area, dining and living room area. The staff has pushed some sofas together to, um, create a small little area for the children as their play area. It's very difficult for women and children to have any type of privacy at all in a very cramped and enclosed space.
And I'm Darianne Johnson. I am the executive director of the Domestic Violence and Rape Crisis Center. Uh, during the last legislative session, we were very, very fortunate that the legislature approved $2 million for shelters in Dickinson, Williston, and Minot. Uh, we hope, we hope in Dickinson to access $750,000 of that money, because that is the large, that's the cap that they put on the amount of money that we can receive. We have already secured land from CHI, St. Joseph's Hospital, which we are also very, very thankful for. And we have our grant due December 1st of this year, and at that time, we have to have letters of commitment and, um, donations by, uh, wonderful community members or by businesses, and we have to have all of that as part of the grant to submit to the state in order to secure, secure those funds. The grants are, are scored, and so, as I said, our, our hope is to get $750,000 of the $2 million. Um, in the past four years, as I've stood before you many times to tell you, there's been a drastic number in, a drastic increase in the number of victims that we are serving, and it's nearly impossible to continue to do it in the existing space that we're in.
To give you an example, the shelter has, uh, helped 17 sex, sex trafficking victims this past year, some as young as 13 years old.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in for Rhonda. Um, it, it's a hard job to do. Traffickers prey on young children because, once they get them into human trafficking, they can keep them in there for a very, very long time. We house in our shelter now rape victims, domestic violence victims, trafficking victims, and all of these people share the space that Rhonda explained to you. It's a difficult task at times, because trafficking victims, for instance, need different services than, say, a domestic violence victim or a sexual assault victim. We do our very, very best. I have a wonderful staff, and we continue to do what we do.
There are so many of us that really have no idea about the level of violence against women and children that occurs every week in, in southwestern North Dakota. As I have been out fundraising, um, I've had so many people talk to me about, um, their sister or their mother, um, a daughter, and what happens here in Dickinson and Bellfield and Richardson and Beach, all of the small towns in southwestern North Dakota, of course, it happens everywhere. But, um, we cannot close our eyes and think it does not happen here, because it does. Um, we have an opportunity now to do something and make, and, and provide a new shelter for these victims. Um, this is an opportunity that we have that, um, in a very short time, you know, by December 1st, we need to have our grant ready to turn in, so that we can access the $750,000 that Darianne spoke of. Um, this will provide a safe place, counseling, and assistance to the many victims that come to our shelter every year.
So we come to you this evening to ask for whatever help the city of Dickinson can help our project with. As Rhonda said, the grant is due December 1st. In order to prove to the state that we can support this project, we will need those letters of commitments, we will need whatever dollars we have. I am in the process of writing other grants that will hopefully fill in the gaps, and I can, I stand in front of you to say that this has been my dream for a very long time. As, as society changes, as things change, um, it just becomes more and more apparent that we can't continue to do things as we always have. We thank you for listening to our presentation. Uh, we ask that anybody that is listening on Channel 19, should they support our cause and are interested in donating to us, that they contact us at the Domestic Violence Center, and I would be willing to talk to anyone who has any questions at all regarding the new shelter, regarding our numbers, regarding what it is that we do to help the victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and trafficking. Thank you.
We have some questions. Presently, you have four bedrooms, so the new facility, what, what are you hoping for? How many bedrooms would you be, what's your goal there?
We are hoping to build large enough to house the number of victims that are coming to us. In our mind, we think of 30. We may not be able to get that high, but...
To accommodate 30 people?
30 people.
But, you're not gonna average four and a half people per bedroom, are you?
Exactly.
You will?
And there will be a bathroom in between, so that each, uh, each family will have their own room and share a bathroom with another family.
And then, uh, to build a facility of this size, do you have a sense of what's your total budgets? Your expected costs are gonna be?
The, um, architects have indicated somewhere between three and a half, three to three and a half million dollars. It's, we're looking for a two-story building, uh, which would be more efficient to build, um, and provide some different sections of the building, so that we have the opportunity to put, um, rape victims, sex trafficking victims, and domestic violence and sexual assault victims in different parts of this building, uh, which we're not able to do now.
And, I don't think you said it here, but, uh, Mrs. DuKart, when you came and visited with me a few days ago, and I think I see it in the printed material, that, uh, your request for funds is a million dollars from the city. Is that still correct?
Yes, that's correct. And, looking at different options, whether that be assistance with water streets, uh, sewer, roads, that type of assistance that the city could do, um, or some other type of assistance that could be pledged over a period of time.
And, uh, when you and I talked, I mean, this, uh, in terms of bonding for a project, this is not a large amount to bond. Typically, bonds are for more dollars, but you and I, just in discussion, uh, kinda wondered if the city had another role here besides, uh, financial support, if we couldn't be, if you needed a fiscal agent, that if the city, much like we did with the community center, it's, it's, you know, Parks and Recs is operating the community center, but the city acted as a fiscal agent, meaning they went and bonded for it, and they collect, you know, all your pledges and, you know, would come into the city, the city handles the payments to the contractors, and then payments back to, to the bonding company. Is that something that you, you think is still a possibility, or do you, do you have those arrangements all taken care of?
No, we, we don't have those arrangements all taken care of. Um, that would be, in, in my mind, um, an excellent way for things to, to happen, because when you look at the very limited staff that's at, at the shelter, um, trying to deal with all the daily crises that they deal with, and then try to figure out how, how to build a building, it's, it's not something that, um, the staff, and certainly the board of directors do.
Right. The, the city has staff that know how to build a building and interact with the construction manager and the architect.
I think that's part of the reason that, that this seemed like the right place for us to come. It affects so many people in our community. It, um, it certainly does fit in with the 30% of the 1% sales tax, um, money, um, and you have the expertise. Um, the police chief has just gone through building quite a remarkable building and does sit on the board, um, at domestic violence, and so we feel that, you know, he, not only through all the experience he has assisting victims, but with the building, that he would be able to help us, and the engineer as well, and it's a good, it's a good fit.
Questions or comments?
You know, the need is great, and, and that's been well-established, and the grant money would be great, and, and the deadline's looming. Um, just thinking of your budget from a staffing standpoint, utilities, you know, when you go from the facility that you're in to something like this, um, what have you and the board, um, come up with as far as maintaining and then coming up with the operating expenses that this facility would incur?
Luckily, I would have a year to write grants.
Okay.
In order to secure what we think we would probably need, which would be three or four more people. But because it wouldn't be done until 2017, that gives me that opportunity to do that in advance.
Other questions or comments?
Mrs. DuKart, uh, has the, uh, billing amount been changed, um, in the opening letter here? We're talking about raising matching funds approximately $3 million. Has that been changed?
Actually, um, Commissioner Jackson pointed out that I didn't do a great job of writing that letter, which I did not do. In my mind, when I was writing it, um, I was trying to say that the building would be approximately $3 million, but the matching funds that the state requires is two-for-one, um, for the $750,000 that we're eligible for with the grant. Now, with the donation of land, uh, which has a value of 1.5 million, we've actually reached that two-for-one match that were required, um, by the state. So, actually, that's just not worded correctly.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't downsize from what I was looking at before.
No. No. Thank you for the question, because I've sent out about 400 letters, and so, I'm quite, you're probably not the only one that wondered about that.
You were on this board before, I, I questioned you a lot, so...
Not quite so much as the president, but...
Just a couple of questions. Do you own the facility you're in now?
Yes, we do.
And, and you would sell that asset?
Absolutely.
Put those proceeds towards the...
Correct.
And then the other question, I think you've partially answered, you talked about the deadline of December 1st. What is the construction timetable? Soon, it sounds like.
We're hoping, we're hoping to break ground in April or as soon as possible this coming spring.
2016.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kessel?
Ms. DuKart, in your opening remarks, you mentioned that, um, violence of this nature happens throughout, and you mentioned a few regional cities. Um, do you offer those services, um, in this, in your current structure to how big of an area? Is it southwest North Dakota? Is it Stark County? Is it, what, what's your general geographic area you cover?
Okay, our shelter covers 10,002 square miles, which includes all of these surrounding eight counties. That's a little bit, um, incorrect, as we get people from all over the world. In the past couple of years, we've gotten people from Africa and Australia and countries that we, most people would not even believe. So we deal with immigration issues and all of those kinds of things as well. So, an eight-county area is what's considered our service area, but we truly do provide services to people from all over the world.
So the unfortunate incidences that bring those guests to you has to occur in that eight-county area? Is that...
No.
Not necessarily?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
It can occur anywhere, and if they choose to come to Dickinson, North Dakota to find help and services, we help them.
Thank you.
Will you be approaching the counties in your service area and asking them for, uh, financial assistance?
I have, I have gone to all, well, I shouldn't say eight, seven of the eight commissions and explained to them that we were building a new shelter and asked for them to please consider that when they chose how much they were going to give to us this year.
The other counties assist with, um, funds for the operation of the shelter annually as well.
That's, well, that's good.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner?
We're all, we see Ms. Johnson here every year, asking for money, and, and we know what the situation of the domestic violence, and it seems like every year, we, we put a bandaid on what their problem is, you know, and I don't think they've ever been in a position like this to build a facility like this that they are in right now. I don't know what the amount is that, that, I mean, we could fly out of the 30% of the 1 cent right now, but I think we all believe that there's something we can do, whether we can come up with that amount. But I, I think we have a, an opportunity now to, to take care, at least the housing part of this problem with the city. So I would encourage everybody to support this fund.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. It's kind of hard, um, not to be emotional, and those of you that know me, uh, know that I tend to be very much that way, but, um, you know, I think because you, you do these projects, you know, um, for the children, you know, you wanna break the cycle, and we've got an opportunity now, and, you know, if, if, um, most people have never been in the shelter, and, and I've just recently, I've been associated with domestic violence, uh, fundraising on a much smaller scale than this, but, um, recently went upstairs, or went... upstairs, or went to the part of the building where the victims are housed, and so that's why I have to come here and ask for your support.
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity, but I also think it's our obligation.
Thank you.
We need to do it.
So, Mr. Kessel, what do you think about the idea of this, you know, this city acting as the fiscal agent? And let me back up first. I mean, they've got a concept, but, you know, at this point, I think you're going to use a construction manager to build this, which I think is a good move. But, you know, the site, there's going to be some costs, probably, to extend a driveway or a street in there. There's going to be some water and sewer and those types of things that the city can assist with. But if all the money can't come together on the first day, which, you know, you essentially have to have to pay the architect and the contractors and so forth, what do you think about the idea of, you know, a small bond, probably like a direct placement with one financial institution, you know, to handle this and the city acting as a fiscal agent?
I also met with Ms. Dukard, Ms. Johnson, this afternoon, and we reviewed that concept. The idea of the city acting as a fiscal agent is, we've done it many, many times in the past. I think it's something that's well within our bailiwick and our experience. And so I don't see that as an issue at all. I think the dollars, there's probably some unique ways that we can assist. Maybe we don't, maybe we shouldn't rule out purchasing their existing shelter as an opportunity or as an asset, as a way to provide them a funding stream and receive an asset in return. I think that could help with any concerns that the commission may have of precedent-setting. So I'd love to sit down a little more, to give a little more thought to how this could be executed, because I think there's several ways we can assist in the construction of a building like this.
And since Mrs. Dukard came over and talked to me, I've reviewed, I think, possible sources of funds here. They've mentioned the 30%, the 1%, that this project would certainly fit the mission of those monies. When we're dealing with infrastructure, streets, water, sewer into there, we can use half-cent sales tax money. We could even use, in my opinion, oil energy impact monies, because a certain portion of this is being driven by oil impact. So there's probably a mixture of funds that you would use to accommodate this. And for the city's share to be up to $1 million, I don't think the city would have a problem at all with that, especially if a fair amount of that is in the civil work, because the half-cent sales tax fund will be our healthiest fund. The 30% isn't totally committed, but it's, let's say it's heavily committed. But I think it's a doable project financially by the city.
If you wouldn't mind, what I'd like to do is, we pledged a lot of those revenue streams, and we've had agreements when we made those pledges, that we'll have to go back and review and make sure that, we may have to get permission from some of those pledges, from some of those sources, or bonding agents, or... So I'd like to go through and make sure that those revenues are available and make a report to the city commission.
I suspect you'll find that they are, and, you know, what I would recommend you do is maybe start to work on a draft resolution, be kind of similar in style to the one we did for the TR Presidential Library. You can come up with lots of very meaningful wherethes here, and...
We could help with that, too.
And, but, you know, in terms of the funds, like I said, I mentioned at least three sources, and I think all three are appropriate here. But I sense the commission is very much behind this project, and I think we'd also encourage you to fully explore that fiscal agent thing, and that would help them out a lot. Like I said, you're not in the business of building buildings, and the city has had quite a bit of experience with that, and it'd really assist you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we'll continue on the timetable agenda. The second item there is a public hearing. This is a rezoning petition, and Mr. Josterson, are you introducing this?
Yes, I am. Thank you, President Johnson. This is a request for a rezoning petition from general commercial to high-density residential. The site is located at 137 Third Street East and is, it's actually 0.16 of an acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. This will be the first public hearing of the proposed rezoning.
And this is an ordinance, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Is this 1596? All right. So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody that wishes to comment regarding this rezoning petition may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, just a correction. You said Third Street. It's Third Avenue in our...
Is it Third Street or Third Avenue?
You said Third Street, and I see Third Avenue.
It says Third Avenue on the...
It's Third Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to comment? No one from the public wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any comments, questions by commissioners regarding this proposed ordinance? Hearing done. Is there a motion regarding the first reading of ordinance number 1596?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The final item on the timetable agenda is a public hearing regarding the liquor license ordinance 1595. City Attorney Goss, do you have anything you'd like to say in light of introduction?
Um, thank you. This ordinance was presented by Nate Buree from Abletop Sickler, who represents Legacy Seven. It is ordinance number 1595, which changes the number of on-off sale liquor licenses that a person may own from two to five. After the last reading, there were some comments regarding needing multiple licenses in order to get discounts for the sale, so we did look into that, and there's no state requirement of number of licenses in order to be able to get those discounts. And I actually spoke with a wholesaler who said that the general practice in North Dakota is based on the quantity of alcohol purchased, not the number of licenses. So I just wanted to clarify that for the commission.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, then, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment, may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. And again, be careful of the condition of the podium. Anyone wish to comment?
Good evening, President Johnson, City Commission. My name is Dean Valesky. I addressed the commission at the last meeting opposing this ordinance change and still feel the same. I don't want to steal anyone else's time here tonight, but I would like to make one clarification from the last meeting and then to make a point. First, the clarification, we are all placing the Family Fair store and the other big-box stores, and this is incorrect. In speaking with the Family Fair organization, they pointed out that they only own one license in Dickinson and one in Fargo. This fact places them in the same category for purchasing power as the single licensees. The point this brings me to is that Family Fair paid approximately $446,000 for the last license, because this is how the license bidding ordinance works. With that, they built a multimillion-dollar facility, operate three stores in Dickinson, and employ a very large number of employees. And now, if this ordinance gets changed, their license will potentially be devalued. So here they are complying with the rules to do business in Dickinson, and we go, if this ordinance is changed, change the rules on them. What kind of message does this send to other companies that may want to come here? Doesn't the commission have an obligation to protect the investment already here? I'm not here to advocate for Family Fair. They are a large company, and they'll be okay. But what if this were the small company? What if this were your company? And you conducted business in accordance with the rules? And then just because a small group wants them changed to benefit themselves, that we go and do it? Is that the message we, Dickinson wants to send? This has become a matter of principle. One final note, isn't it kind of strange that one of the reasons that this change is being asked for by this group is so they will be able to better compete against the big-box stores with their business model? Those were their words exactly, and yet in the last meeting, the same group was telling us that the way to compete against Walmart is with good old-fashioned customer service, and Newby's Hardware was their example. Newby's didn't get an ordinance change to compete with Walmart. Other stores are not asking for an ordinance change to compete either. And they are telling you both that they need this ordinance change for their business model to compete, and at the same time, saying that you just compete with customer service. I have to. It's kind of confusion, at the very least. Consider that. Field any questions that the commission may have?
Thank you, Mr. Valesky. Are there any questions?
Mr. Valesky, why do you think the license value is going to go down?
Well, when you think about if the, I respect your digging into the rates that the distributors are saying, that, yeah, there is no state law, there never was, it is all a distributor situation. So with that, the distributors, depending on who you talk to, will tell you different things, and it is a volume number. And so they're going to be able to go and compete in a better arena with the five stores. So with that, anyone who comes in and looks at, I want to buy X license, which is just going to be a number one, and if they do their homework and look at what they're competing against, all of a sudden, they're not interested, or they're going to bring down that number and only offer you X amount for it. That's how we see it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Johnson and city commissioners. My name is Don Paul. My wife, Linda, and I own Ponderosa Liquor. And I would like to apologize, I was unable to attend the first reading on this matter. But I am here to ask you to vote no on change in ordinance 1595, from two license limit to four or five. This change would only benefit one group, and that is Legacy Seven. It would create a disadvantage to all the single license holders, and I believe this would shift the control of the liquor license from the city to Legacy Seven. Legacy Seven has two licenses now, and they stated they only want this change to compete against the big-box stores, which is a baseless claim. Ponderosa Liquor is only one store, and we're competing right now with Walmart, Family Fair, Cashwise, and the other eight liquor stores in Dickinson, and we're doing just Three months ago, our son quit a very good paying job in Mandan and moved back to Dickinson to help us and someday take over the family business. He is now second-guessing his decision, because if this ordinance changes to a four- or five license limit, we could see the exact scenario that just played out 100 miles away in Bismarck. The Miller Boys that had Captain Jack's started with one license, and then it went to two, and then they bought three more single individual liquor license up, and they had five. They then leveraged the power of selling multiple license at once to a huge national corporation, which happened to be Cashwise. If this happens here, I believe the value of all new or existing licenses will go down, because no young or new entrepreneur will want to be the David that takes on Goliath. I have nothing against large corporations in our town, but they do not grow and support our community the way the small businesses do. The profits from my small business generates, stays right here in Dickinson, and I'm not sure the same could be said for a corporation holding multiple licenses. So I ask you to do the right thing for the city and vote no on this change. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Are there any comments or questions? Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners, Mr. Kessel. My name is Tim Lance, and I am one of the partners in Legacy Seven. First, I'd like to pose this question. Why should the liquor business be regulated any differently than any other business entity? Yes, there are certain laws that need to be in place to protect the community, drinking ages, locations, et cetera. However, should we limit the number of branches any banking institutions can have, any insurance offices, any financial planning offices, grocery stores, manufacturing facilities? If an individual or a group of individuals chooses to invest their money to build and grow their investment, it should be their choice. Absolutely, there are advantages for having multiple stores or branches. It allows for that entity to operate more efficiently and compete with the buying power of large corporations. However, this should not be described as a dark and corrupt place, as Mr. Valesky stated. I'm not sure what the fear is. We're not criminals moving into their neighborhoods. Legacy Seven has been honest and transparent to the commission and to the public. This is the free enterprise system that our country has been built on. Legacy Seven will not oppose Mr. Valesky or any other owner to pursue the same opportunity that Legacy Seven is asking for. Anyone chasing the American dream can raise the capital or take on partners and purchase additional stores. Several individuals in our group have taken out loans and second mortgages to invest into this partnership. Legacy Seven's intent is not to force the competition out of business. Ultimately, the consumer chooses where they will shop. If you offer good customer service, a convenient location, a good selection, the customer will recognize it and frequent your establishment. Just like any other business owner, including several individuals in this room today, is our goal to make a better life for ourselves and our families. Legacy Seven would like to pass on a legacy to our children and grandchildren. One of Mr. Valesky's first comments at the previous meeting was that the only reason to change this ordinance is to solve a problem or benefit the greater good. The problem being solved by changing this ordinance is that it will allow individuals or partnerships, whether it's Legacy Seven or any other entity, the ability to continue to be competitive with the large corporations. The other problem that this solves is it allows current license owners the opportunity to sell their license to another store owner, someone who already knows and understands that business. Otherwise, you are restricting and limiting who can actually purchase the license. The greater good is realized by the consumers, and they'll have convenient access to better pricing and selection. They'll have convenient access to better pricing and selection. It is ironic that certain individuals have expressed their concerns about changing this ordinance. One of the reasons that Legacy Seven is here asking for this change in the ordinance is because we have been approached by an individual that is speaking against this change, asking if we were interested in purchasing their license and their liquor business. Mr. Valesky claims that changing this ordinance would devalue the licenses. As you all are aware, the value of these licenses has not decreased over the past years. In fact, they have increased substantially. The fact that there is a limit to the number of licenses available will always create a demand and help them retain their value. Also, Mr. Valesky incorrectly stated that new licenses could be bought up by deep money interests, and we would never see another new liquor store. The liquor ordinance clearly states that no entity can purchase a license and not actively use it. In summary, we are not asking for unlimited licensing. We're not promoting a monopolistic environment. It is our goal to design this ordinance so that anyone, including Mr. Valesky, would have the ability to build and grow their liquor business in the city of Dickinson. We don't believe that there has been a valid case presented to deter the change in this orders, in ordinance. There is no Pandora's Box, as has been stated. We ask for your support in a yes vote to change this ordinance. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. I'd answer any questions if you have one.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Are there any comments or questions?
I have one. I'm not sure that we can compare our liquor businesses to banks or any other business because we limit the number. And I think you'd probably agree, it can only be put words in your mouth. There should be some maximum, should there not? When we only have 18 licenses, there should be some maximum.
I agree, yes.
So, and I have a hunch that everybody would agree with that.
Yes.
That most would agree with that. So now it comes down to what's the number?
The amount.
Why do we have two today? You know, why should it be five? Could it be eight? You know? Would you agree?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. And I think, you know, the five obviously is an arbitrary number that, you know, we came up with. We feel it, it's at a point where it's not half, you know, it's not 40%. You know, it's a number that we think is still capable of showing that you're still not creating that monopoly environment, so.
And I guess the thing that I'm really struggling with, because I do think there should be some maximum, is how do we make this something that's not arbitrary? Your group wanted five. You know, had this been initiated here, maybe it would be some other number. That's the struggle we have. Should it stay at two? Again, most of us agree there should be some maximum. But thank you for your comments.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lance.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Anyone else? Okay, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Our intention is to put this on the agenda for action, second reading at the next meeting. Mr. Kessel, I think I'm clear on this. We have 18 licenses, and those do not include our club licenses, for example, like the Elks' house.
That's correct, President Johnson. We have 18 licenses that are limited.
And if we change to the five, five doesn't divide into 18 equally, but you could conceivably have three major groups controlling 15 of the 18 licenses right now.
If you include the big box retailers that have licenses already, that certainly could be a scenario that could exist.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I do think, for the public's knowledge, we should mention these written statements that we have. We've been provided a number of written statements in favor of the ordinance. And by my count, and somebody can correct me here, we have 10 different establishments represented. Some of those, I think, are owned by the same owners. But if I'm counting right here, we have 10 of the establishments in town that have given us notes in support of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I have received six or seven emails, all opposing the ordinance change, and I don't believe any phone calls, but all emails. Okay, we're clear on where we go then, next meeting?
I'll make sure it's on the agenda.
All right. Well, we'll go back to the non timetable agenda and then. And we were having a very spirited discussion on mechanical and contractors licenses. We'll pick up there. One of the concerns I have with the city issuing licenses, and apparently we issue some already.
Correct.
And so do we take on, in a sense, some legal liability? If we've issued the license and then the contractor turns out to do a really poor job, can the person who gets the poor job come back and say, hey, this was a city-approved contractor, they really did a poor job here. City, I expect you to pick up some of the costs that I've experienced on because of this.
Yes and no. The way that the ordinance reads when we issue the license, the licensee actually agrees to hold the city harmless and indemnify the city. And we also take the bond to cover any of those costs that the city might incur.
Well, if it's a shady contractor and they indemnify us, we really don't have anything.
Which is why the bond's in place.
$5,000.
Right.
Shady contractor can do more than $5,000 damage. Just look at our podium here tonight.
Like the Armory Room.
Yeah, yes. We don't want to talk about that.
And different cities do have different amounts depending on the type of work that is being done. For example, on the contractor's license, Jamestown requires a $10,000 bond. Other ones require proof of insurance that the city is listed on in amounts of $100,000 to $300,000. So that's something else that we can look at to have that greater protection as well.
Do you believe we have, you know, sufficient staff time that, you know, you could do this, in a sense, do this well, so that we make sure that they do have the proper bond, that they have insurance? Because I do think, once they get a city license, in a sense, we're saying, you know, we're implying this is a reputable contractor now.
Excuse me, President Johnson. We've had several discussions related to this at the executive team level. And not only do I believe that we have the staff time, but I think it's clear that the staff is encouraging the city commission to move forward with a revision to the ordinance that would allow the expansion of licenses and permits, as we're discussing today. There's a great many, in my experience, the types of claims that any resident makes certainly aren't limited to a contractor. We get people claiming we should pay for their tires and such if they hit a bump in the road. So I'm not as concerned about that as I am about someone who legitimately gets ripped off by a contractor who walks away. And it doesn't rise to the level, for whatever reason, for the state to take notice. And we, as a local entity, can. We can respond quicker to a disreputable contractor than the state can. And the quicker we can get them out of our community, the better off we and other residents will be.
What kind of fees are you looking at for the license for each trade?
I don't recall right now what the current fees. They are minimal. Do you have that as part of your...
I don't have it in front of me, but they were minimal.
Are they less than the state?
I don't know what the state fees are. That's something we'd have to find out, Commissioner Dacre, in comparison. But I believe our licenses are in that $20 to $30 range. They're a rather minimal fee.
And some of the language, too, I did some research, too. There's, on the HVAC, there's no such thing as a licensing for master or journeyman.
In the state?
Right.
That's correct. That one specifically, a lot of the cities have been moving towards implementing those licenses. And I wish building director Swint was here to elaborate on this, but they are coming up with sort of a standard testing for them before the licenses are issued. And most of the bigger cities have gone to requiring these. Bismarck, Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, Wapton, West Fargo, and Williston all require this license.
But in the state right now, there is no way, like HVAC, there's no way to be master or journeyman. It's just a license from the EPA to handle freon. So there's, I mean, there's no test that you can become a master or a journeyman.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that they're starting to implement. And that they're pushing it to be...
The state's going to implement this, or...
The cities are doing it, and I'm not sure, like I said, I wish Leonard was here. I'm not sure if it's coming from the state level or the city level, but a group of cities have been meeting to create that standardized test, and it will differentiate between the journeyman and the master.
The way I read the ordinance, every one-person plumber, carpenter, drywall guy will need this license. I mean, they would fall under the broad category of contractor.
Commissioner Jackson, I think it would be our intent that the company that they work for would be licensed. If it's not written...
I'm talking about the people who don't work for another company.
They're sole proprietors.
They're sole proprietors, basically.
Correct. That is correct.
So they would need this license.
Correct.
What will the application process look like?
I wish I'd have brought an application with us. The application that we have today for the licenses we do issue, I believe is one page long, not difficult to fill out. It shouldn't take you much time at all.
Not looking for references and, you know, something to give testimony to their character?
Correct. I think what we can do is provide you a copy of one of the applications we use today, so that you have that for reference prior to the next meeting.
And one of the things they do have to provide is that they do have a current state license.
Well...
In the areas that they can get one.
Correct.
I'm not sure that those people need a state license.
Right, right.
I'd have to check that, but I don't think they do.
Well, the ones, the types that you mentioned would fall under the contractor's license, and the state does require a contractor's license.
But isn't there a minimum dollar amount? Isn't it a public project thing again?
It's a sum of, I believe it's $2,000, the state's total.
There's several different levels of contractor's license that the state issues, and it just varies on the amount of work done.
You know, I think you could continue this to the next meeting in terms of reports, and probably, you know, if you have some current forms, or say you like the form Jamestown uses, you know, you could put that up on the overheads and kind of show us in the public, you know, what you're thinking of. And if there's more research that needs to be done on the protocol involving the state issuing licenses. As I recall, when we've dealt with, or talked about this issue before, I mean, the state doesn't do a screening process. It's if you pay the fee, you get the license.
Correct.
So, I mean, all that tells us is they paid the fee. It isn't like the state has checked them out and blessed them.
I think they do require, in most instances, insurance.
Insurance, okay.
I would also like to see us talk to contractor groups. We may find that a group of good contractors might really encourage this. I don't know.
Or the Home Builders Association, they're very strong in our community. I would be interested in what you find out from them as well.
Okay. I think that this would have been more important two, three years ago to have something like this in place, you know? Now we have a lot of our contractors that are not what we consider local contractors have left town. Read the paper a couple weeks ago about a couple cease and desist orders from the state for some contractors and so on. I think that our problem with some work performance is going to start showing itself here in the next year or so. Personally, I would be in favor of this type of situation. And like Mr. Jackson stated, I'm not sure that the home builders or something like that wouldn't encourage it. That's one of the complaints we hear about them is, why are you reading so hard on us but not on the fly-by-night guy? So maybe that's something, I think we should obviously talk to them and see what their take on it is. Like I said, I'm leaning to where I would support an action like this.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other comments?
We'll do some additional research presented at the next meeting.
Can you come back with the structure, too, just so we understand where that's coming from?
Yep, we'll include that as well. That's a good point. President Johnson, I do have two additional reports.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry. I had one more as well. We presented to the Civil Service Commission last week a change to the ordinance regarding recruitment. Ms. Nomenick brought it up the last commission meeting about using recruitment agencies for some of the higher-level positions, such as the deputy city administrator and the city engineer. We did get approval from the Civil Service Commission to move forward with that. So we will be presenting that ordinance for first reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
I asked you to give that report, so I apologize for forgetting. I just wanted to mention two things. First of all, I've been in Seattle the majority of last week attending the ICMA, International City Accounting Manager Association Conference. It is, in my opinion, the premier conference in terms of educational materials for people in positions such as mine. I really want to thank the commission for allowing me to attend. It was, again, another great conference. I brought loads of material back that the executive team is just going to love in the next few weeks. But while I was gone, I just wanted to thank the staff for creating this agenda and for taking care of the phone calls in my absence. And then the other thing that I wanted to do is just recognize the facilities that we're sitting in today. This, these new, this new room was designed by Erin Wallander from EWI Design. She's in the audience. Erin, if you wouldn't mind standing up. She's the one who put this together. And I also want to recognize some of our city staff, because in order to minimize cost in this venture, a lot of city staff actually conducted the work. And Leonard Swint headed up the project, he was project manager. Jim Thorpe, Terry Steffes, Tom Eli, and Aaron Meyer did a lot of the actual work in the building itself. So we have new lighting, we have a new sound system, we have a much safer building or room than we did before. And I hope everybody enjoys coming to the meetings as much as I know this crew did in creating the room for you. So thank you to Erin and to the rest of the city staff that put this room together. I hope you enjoy it, like it. I hope you enjoy it and like it.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions for the city administrator or the city attorney? Well, then, we're going to move on to public safety, and Chief Seabuck has a proclamation. I think he's going to read to us.
President Johnson, commissioners, it's that time of year again where we recognize nationally Fire Prevention Week and locally also, and I have this evening a proclamation from the governor to share with you and with the citizens. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,745 people in the United States in 2014, according to the U.S. Fire Administration, and fire departments nationwide responded to 367,500 home fires. And whereas half of all U.S. home fire deaths occur at night between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., when people are most likely to be sleeping, having a working smoke alarm in the home cuts the risk of dying in a fire in half. And whereas smoke alarms can make a difference between life and death in a fire by alerting people in time to escape safely, and whereas every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm outside each sleeping area and on every level of the home, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas North Dakota's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and public education, and whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep: Every Bedroom Needs a Working Smoke Alarm" serves to remind us about this potentially lifesaving message. Now, therefore, as governor of the state of North Dakota, I do hereby proclaim October 4 to 10, 2015, Fire Prevention Week in the state of North Dakota. Signed, Governor Jack Darimple. Our staff started today with our own fire prevention activities. Fire Prevention Week for the Dickinson Fire Department and the community of Dickinson runs longer than a week, because there is a very strong interest in our fire prevention and public education messages from the community and from the area schools. And we'll have a lot of kids coming through the fire station, receiving a public safety or a fire prevention safety message, and tours of the station, of course. But in addition to that, our staff will be out giving lectures and demonstrations to civic groups and to business groups. It's a very busy time of year for us. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Chief Seabuck. Are there any comments or questions for the chief?
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to engineering, and the first item there I have conflict of interest with, so Commissioner Jackson will do item A.
Okay, this is an item for a change order on the State Avenue project, and I don't see Ms. Marshak here.
She is not able to be here this evening. I can present the information she had to share with you today on this change order. Again, this is for the State Avenue project north of 21st Street. This change order accounts for modifications in earthwork quantities and excavated materials such as lignite coal and waste excavation encountered on the project. Originally, the project was bid with one item for that common excavation. Some of it was to be exported off-site and to be wasted. The additional common excavation on the project that the contractor will encounter will all need to be hauled off-site. So when they developed their bid, they had a weighted average for material hauled off-site compared to the amount that was used on the project. Those earthwork quantities have changed for this project, thus the adjustments in the unit prices have been reevaluated and presented in the change order. KLJ and city staff have carefully reviewed the quantities with the contractor, and KLJ will be resurveying the grading limits to confirm the amounts that are estimated in the change order. The unit bid price for the project was $4.20 per cubic yard. The revised unit price is $4.80 per cubic yard, and this is a change resulting in an increase of $83,482.20 to the project cost. I would like to share with you the breakdown that we went through with Night River on the project. Originally, around these numbers, but the project had 43,000 yards of excavation on the project. Their weighted average was $3.76 a cubic yard for the dirt that needed to be moved within the project. And the dirt that needed to be exported off the project was roughly 1,800 yards, and their bid price for that, not their bid price, but their weighted price for that dirt was $13.95 a cubic yard, which comes to the average weighted price of the $4.20 per cubic yard. With the lignite coal and extra excavation encountered on the project, the export amount is now 13,500 versus the 1,800 that was bid. They've revised their weighted price for that export dirt from $13.95 per cubic yard down to $7.97 per cubic yard with a net or weighted average of $4.80. This price we compared, the $4.80 compared to other bids that we've received for the project, we had five bids. The average of those bids for the common excavation was $7.78 per cubic yard. So we're about $3 a cubic yard below the rest of the bidders on the project. So comparing it and looking at the math that the contractors provided us, we feel that this was a fair adjusted unit price for common excavation. City staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kubus?
Mr. Kubus, what was the total budget for this project?
The total budget that we had entered into the project initially, I'm going back to probably the beginning of the year, was $8.8 million. That included the construction costs and engineering costs.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Need a motion to approve the change order?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Motion carries. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We'll now go to item B, which is a report. This is a minimum payment policy for right-of-way acquisition. City Engineer Kubus?
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioner. On several of our past projects, we've had to engage with our adjacent landowners to our properties and either acquire right-of-way, a permanent utility easement, or a temporary construction easement to accommodate our construction project. It's been a lengthy process in many of these negotiations that sometimes involve lengthy appraisals as well. On a project we have under design right now, which is the water main that would extend east to the new water tank by the Public Works Building, we've encountered some very small slivers of right-of-way, hundreds of square feet small. And using a market value or even just a ballpark price per acre, per square foot, these are very small dollar amounts, sometimes less than $100, sometimes less than $50. But to do the project correctly, we need these easements. The dollar amounts are very small. Most landowners nowadays take these right-of-way agreements to their attorneys that they use. And so it's came back to us requesting or, I guess, requesting that the city would adopt a minimum payment policy, which would really set a floor on any acquisition we would make. And the DOT has a policy like this when they have to go and acquire small slivers of temporary easements and right-of-way. Some of the dollars that we had discussed, just based on some of the appraisals we've had and some of the acquisitions we've had in the past year's project, were to use a minimum payment for any fee title right-of-way. Where we're buying permanent right-of-way from a property owner, let's just say $1,500. For a permanent easement would be $750, and for a temporary construction easement would be $150. And while those numbers are somewhat arbitrary, they do follow a general pattern of an easement generally being paid at half the value of permanent right-of-way, and a temporary construction easement being paid at a tenth of the value of permanent right-of-way. So those numbers could be adjusted. I do think a minimum payment policy would make some of these small acquisitions easier. And based on this math, with property at $1 to $2 a square foot, which we often encounter in Dickinson, you'd probably use this floor, this minimum payment policy, at acquisitions of around 750 to 1,500 square feet. So anything above that, we would be paying market value per square foot or per acre. If it got below that, at a dollar or $2 a square foot property, the minimum payment would set that floor, and we would pay them based on that. So the report today is to assess the willingness of the commission to move forward with a minimum payment policy. Again, the numbers where we set those floors would still be negotiated and be able, yet to be determined. I believe we'd move forward with an ordinance if that was the wishes of the commissioners. That's my report to you today on the minimum payment policy.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Reaction?
I'm okay to move forward. I think it's a good policy to have. You guys can get your work done a lot quicker. You're not sitting there, like you said, very small. I worked as a right-of-way agent. I know the very small things are tedious sometimes.
Okay. I had one other report. We had a meeting with the Special Assessment Commission. We talked about some of those projects. The one project that's completed and is moving forward is the 40th Street Water and Sewer Project from last year, and right now, we have a meeting date set, Ms. Spinstock, with the 13th, with the Special Assessment Commission to finalize that. It'll be a public hearing. Potentially, we may need a special meeting of the commission on the 28th, so we can certify those assessments to the county. Flexible? That's drop dead date.
That would be a problem for me after 5:30, prior to that.
The morning works for me, but not the afternoon.
I could make something work on the 28th.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Any, are there any comments or questions for the city engineer? All right, we'll move to planning, and I assume Mr. Josephson will present those two items. We have two plats, I believe, so.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. The first one is Parkway Ford First Subdivision. This is a final plat for the Parkway Ford First Edition. The site consists of all of Lot 10, Block 3 of Meyer First Edition, as well as a parcel of land located in the west half of Section 1, Township 139 North, Range 96 West. The site's approximately 6.16 acres. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
So you've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Are there any comments or questions?
I'll move that we approve the final plat of the Parkway Ford First Subdivision.
We have the motion and the second. I'm just, is this a resolution or is this strictly a motion? On the agenda, it calls for a resolution, but I didn't see a resolution in the, in the materials here. Does it just simply take a motion?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. I think it wasn't attached at the end.
Well, I don't think I have it.
Maybe it got attached to page four, but it is a resolution.
You think? I can't hear you, Rita.
It is a resolution. It probably got attached to the page before, but it is a resolution.
It is. Okay, so then it would be Resolution...
Forty.
Forty, okay.
Mr. President.
So your motion was to approve the resolution?
There is a resolution in the, under the Shetler Acres. It just got misplaced, it looks like.
So there's probably two of them there.
No, there's only one. Parkway Ford One.
Is under Shetler.
That's the next agenda item.
Yep, there it is. Okay, so I understood Mr. Jackson's motion to be that he's moving the approval of Resolution 40-2015. Who had the second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. So I'm going to assume the Shetler is Resolution 41.
That's correct.
2015, okay. Mr. Josephson?
Thank you, President Johnson. This is a final plat for Shetler Acres Subdivision. The site is generally located in the west, in the southwest half of Section 11, Township 139 North, Range 96 West. The site's approximately 10.11 acres. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Okay, you've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Any comments or questions? All right, is our motion regarding Resolution 41-2015?
Move to approve resolution.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Josephson?
No, thank you very much.
Are there any comments by commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public. I do have a statement to read. I am announcing my resignation from the Dickinson City Commission and as president of the Board of Commissioners effective October 31, 2015. As many of you know, I am a member of the MDU Resources Board of Directors. MDU Resources is a publicly traded company and a member of the New York Stock Exchange and is subject to the rules and regulations of the New York Stock Exchange. The annual amount of business between the City of Dickinson and MDU Resources and its subsidiaries is reaching an amount that exceeds the standards set by the New York Stock Exchange and would result in me being designated a non-independent director. If I am no longer an independent director, I have to leave the MDU Resources Board. I prefer to remain on the MDU Board. I wish to thank the Dickinson citizens for allowing me to serve as your mayor. It has truly been an honor and a privilege. It is without a doubt one of the most fulfilling jobs I have held during my career. Dickinson is a great community, and I am proud to call it my home. I also wish to thank my fellow commissioners, both past and present. I have had the good fortune to serve with an outstanding group. I am confident with Commissioner Jackson's leadership. They will continue to lead the city in a professional and competent manner. And finally, I would like to thank the city staff, both past and present, for the excellent work they do for our community. Dickinson has been blessed to have many dedicated public servants. I know the current staff, under the able leadership of city administrator Kessel, will continue in that tradition. Mr. Kessel and Mr. Jackson have known for a while that this was likely to happen, and Mr. Kessel, I don't know if you want to address anything as a result of... Mr. Kessel, I don't know if you want to address anything as a result of this action tonight or if you're going to address that two weeks from now, but...
President Johnson, I would like to, to make a couple comments. I'm going to reserve my comments for your leadership as mayor and commission president for the next meeting. Obviously, I'll make a general statement and say I really wish you could have filled out your term and ran again. But we do have options as a commission, and I'd like to mention them today. We don't have to take any actions today, but we will in a very short period of time. The first thing that needs to be done, and this is effective after the 13th of, or excuse me, the October 31st date, is we have to wait for a 14-day period, or excuse me, 15-day period in which the public can request a special election be held to replace your position. In order to do so, there would need to be a 5% of qualified electors would have to present a petition within that 15-day period. In absence of that special election request by the public, you as a commission have the choice to leave the seat vacant until the next city commission election, which would be held in June of 2016. You, you could call a special election of your own to fill the position. You can appoint a person to fill the vacancy. Or you can appoint someone to fill the office of president that President Johnson would, would vacate and then fill that vacancy created by his appointment. In the media, the, it's very clear that our ordinance states that Vice President Jackson would take over as the president in the absence of, of the president itself. So you do have several choices that are before you. I wanted to outline them so that you had a full understanding of what those choices are. And then at the next city commission meeting, you can take action on one of those choices. I'll make sure that we dispense this memorandum to the full commission so that you can review it at your leisure. But if there's any, I'd like to address any questions that you may have about any of these vacancy filling options that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel?
I have no questions. I think there will probably be much said at a later time. This is unfortunate that we're in this position, but knowing Dennis, I know he gave it a lot of thought and is doing the right thing. Wish I could have waited a little bit longer, too. But I think we'll probably all have something to say at a later time.
Mr. President, I think we were both fairly young people when we started on this board 16 years ago. I'll reserve a lot of my comments for later, but had I known 16 years ago that you were going to leave me early, I don't know if I would have given you all this support over the years. But I'm, I'm going to miss you and appreciate everything you have done.
Thank you. I think the proper thing to do right now is for the chair to entertain a motion to...
Adjourn?
Adjourn, yes.
So move.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on, favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. The motion carries or adjourned.